...or negotiating with your new superintendent.
I've told it today.
There you go. The other thing is you might want to update your -- you guys are good. This is great. You might want to talk about your job description and updating your job description if you haven't done that already. There may not be any changes. Other informational documents that you might like to have ready for candidates, a budget summary, your organizational chart, things like that. The last thing I would ask you, and Carolyn, you check me out here, make sure I'm covering everything. The last thing I would ask you is for provision for us to link to your website. Because what we will do is put the announcement up on our website, a lot of traffic comes into our website for the position, and then we send them to your website, for example, for the candidate profile and for general information.
You mean the school committee?
Yes. So may we have, may we link to your website? Is that okay?
Conversely, you can link to ours.
Yes, you can. Carolyn, have I left anything out, do you think? Yes. I mentioned to you that we did not include focus groups in your contract because we weren't sure that you wanted to do that. Focus groups can be good in that you get some in-depth information and the ability to dialogue with folks. But the fact of the matter is people are really busy, and attracting people to focus groups in the evening or early morning, for example, can be difficult. But if you'd like to think about scheduling a couple or three focus groups, we're happy to do that at no additional charge. In addition, if you would like us to interview, and Carolyn does this usually by telephone, interview certain people in your community, for example, other municipal officials, other stakeholders that you think have an important perspective, we're happy to do that as well. And what we would do is do that in the period that we're also doing the survey, so that we would bring the results of those focus groups and the survey to you when we talk with you about the candidate profile. So you can think about that if you wish. A lot of districts now are not doing focus groups simply because it's so difficult to get people together. I mean, we do focus groups of two people sometimes. And so it calls to question whether or not in these busy times people are available to meet. But if you'd like us to try, we can do that. For example, if you'd like us to do a focus group with parents, or you'd like us to do a focus group with a group of teachers, or you'd like us to do a focus group with your administrative team, we're happy to do that. And we would think that, you know, two or three might be enough.
I agree. I mean, can we talk about this? We might as well, because you could start planning this now. I mean, I think focus groups are important.
Okay.
Did we do that last time?
Yes.
I know, two times ago we did, because I was on that.
We did a big community focus group upstairs in the city hall, but I'm going to agree, I think, I don't like the word transparency, but this is the type of community that values being included. I also think it is really important for us to run a focus group that encourages teachers to come and one for administrators. We will have administrators on our committee who will represent the administrators, but I think that direct feedback for us might be important.
Okay. So Carolyn, maybe you can be in touch?
Can any school committee member want to comment on that before we?
I think there's great value in it. I know, you know, it will be incumbent on us to try to populate those focus groups, I think, but I think that they're valuable.
Okay. Well, you don't need, you don't need hundreds of participants. If we can get even 10 people together, that can be valuable, because we can interact with them. And that gives us the ability to dig down into what they're saying, which you cannot do with a survey.
Mr. Cole?
Yeah, no, I agree with that, and I just think it's important to keep it in the same type of balance that you articulated with the screening committee, that if you're going to, you're going to have a group for administrators, teachers, parents, you want to make sure what you're considering is balanced. As of right now, the general committee doesn't know who's going to be on the search committee. So I think, you know, once I think we do know, once it's common knowledge, if you will, I think we're going to be better able to discuss where those focus groups should come from.
Good point.
You know, there's also the fact that, you know, one of my, I guess, objectives as a school committee is to see that Newburyport becomes a regional leader in education, because becoming a regional leader in education is going to attract businesses, professionals to this community, and may help, help us in other ways, too. And I think, so I think we don't want to leave the business community out of this either, you know. So again, I think the balance, I think a real, you know, when I, and that's why I wanted to talk to you about this roster here, because look at that roster, it's 12, 12, one of each, 12. Not three of one, not two of one, one of each. So I like that selection, and I'm not saying we have to do the exact same thing, but I think it's important that we do strike that balance.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So how does that affect the timeline? Again, like where would the, I know, where would the focus groups fit in?
Almost immediately, Carolyn will be in touch with your liaison, and we'll start talking about dates and times. And Carolyn and I will both, probably both do them, but Carolyn, she's an expert in that, and I actually go with her lead with that, because she's, she really, she knows how to handle that and get it done. But I'm thinking three focus groups might work. And in addition to that, we don't mind calling municipal officials, or others that you think might, you know, you might want us to call your chief of police, for example. You might want us to call some community service member that has some interesting insights and that you want to include. So we're happy to do that as well. Okay? Carolyn, you can be in touch with him about that. Okay. So, you've been terrific, and I thank you for your attention. Assuming all of this rolls out smoothly, and it usually does, you will be, you will probably be interviewing your finalists in mid-January and into late-January, and maybe making your decision as early as February. If you can do that, what, February and March, and if you can do that, what you do is you, first of all, get the decision made, which is nice, and you can put that behind you, but you also have a nice transition period. Because Susan is going to be here through July, is she? Or through June, I guess?
Through June 30.
Through June 30. That gives you a chance, that gives a chance for Susan and the superintendent to, you know, to sort of transition and get an understanding of how things work.
And Susan did mention that she would like to have that.
Great. So I think.
I just had one more question that I'm trying to remember. We then had, was it members of the school committee or members of the selection committee? With the final three to five people, did you go visit schools?
It was the school committee.
That's once you get down to finalists.
Once we get down to the.
Yeah. We had representatives of the schools. We had a teacher go and a principal win.
I just wanted, I just was trying to.
It's right there. I'm sorry.
Let me go over that for you just a little bit, just so that everybody hears it, since some may not. When you get to interviewing your finalist, you usually interview one finalist per day. Doesn't have to be done this way. But one finalist per day, because during that, during the day that that finalist is here, they're visiting the schools and talking to people and, you know, perhaps having a luncheon reception or something. Then in the evening, you interview that candidate. Now, you can do two in a day, and what you do, obviously, is you start at opposite ends of the school system, and you do this, and then you interview two candidates in the evening. Sometimes you can do that. Most districts prefer one a day. So there's probably a period of about a week where people are going to be in your school system, talking to parents, talking to teachers, watching, you know, watching the kids and talking to some of the kids, and so on, and then interviewing in the evening. You might also want to think about a dinner for that person when they're visiting you with representatives, perhaps, of the school committee, or if you don't wish to do that, with a representative group that you put together. Now, once you've done your interviews, you then determine whether you want to do site visits to their districts or not. Now, a lot of school systems are not doing site visits, again, for the reasons that we talked about with focus groups. Time is so limited and people are busy that a lot of districts are not doing that. And what we do in its place is we provide the school committee with the names and contact information of references that we think have a particularly interesting or important perspective on the candidate that you, as school committee members, should hear. And we then give you, the school committee, the opportunity to speak directly to some of the references that we point out to you. We'll be calling, once your finalists are named, we'll be calling references. And as we speak to those references, we'll be noting those that have particular, have things that are particularly interesting that you ought to hear about, whether, you know, good or bad. And those are the things that we note and pass on to you so that you can speak to people directly.
Well, you know, if you had a candidate from Hawaii in January.
Well, you could do that, yeah. Actually, we had, one search, we had people going to the West Coast, believe it or not, so, I mean, it can be.
I think there's really valuable information that comes out of visiting the school districts. I think we've seen that, you know, time and time again, when, you know, we've obviously been through this several times, and I think that that has been a very important piece of information.
Right.
Because people tend to fall back, they tend to meet somebody, have a private, or a sort of like offline kind of conversation, and really good information has been brought back to the school committee as a result of those site visits. So that potentially could, you know, adjust the timeline a little bit, because you're right, that is consuming, especially if you have five people that you want to go visit.
Sure. And you may not want to visit. After interviewing, you may decide you only want to.
Right.
Visit three.
Right.
Two, and that, you know, that's what you do.
But you do get a very different feeling.
You do.
Visiting a site vis-à-vis interviewing other people. Some of them you set up for us. We met with, you know, the parent group.
Yep.
And so that kind of interaction, I found valuable. So I think we'd like to talk about that.
Yeah. We'll think along those lines, and you can make that decision down the road. We're happy to help you.
We're going to do that. We just, it depends on how many site visits. We definitely want to do site visits.
It's also an opportunity for you to go sort of off the beaten track. I often tell the story, when I was a candidate for a superintendency, and I was working in New Hampshire, and I had a visiting team come to my, my school, and it was a five-member visiting team, but I only saw four of the members, because the other member was downtown talking to the chief of police and people in town to find out about me. So there's, you know, there can be value in terms of the way you do it, yeah. So. How are we doing, Carolyn?
Good. I think the only thing that I would add is, once the names are public, everybody in Newburyport who has an interest in the superintendent will be making their own reference calls and offering that information to you, too, so that, you know, teachers will know teachers and parents will know relatives who live in those districts, and you want to have a way for them to funnel that if they're interested in passing on what they learned, and how they would do that to the school committee. So there's all those things we can talk about as we get closer to that.
Can you just talk about, for a minute, because I know the mayor has to go, confidentiality?
Oh, goodness, yes.
I think it would be good for all of us to hear that before we begin any of this, just so that we're, you know, you talked about the open meeting law, but there's also confidentiality of candidates.
Huge.
Exactly. It is huge, and we emphasize that over and over again, and I know people we work with, I think, get tired of us reminding them. But in the preliminary stages of a superintendent's search, when we're working with the screening committee, the interviews and all of the review of the applications and the resumes all occur behind closed doors. And none of that, none of that interaction, none of that information from the executive session ever comes public unless it's by some court order or something like that. And it's incredibly important, because a lot of the candidates that you will have before you are applying based upon their faith in us as a search group, that we're protecting their identity through this process, because they may not be telling their present employer.
Right.
And you can understand, you know, you don't want to, because they tell their employer and the word gets out in the community and.
And they drop out.
And then they drop out.
They deny they were in the search and they drop out.
That's right. And it creates problems for them in their home district. So we, we ask, and we ask you, as school committee members, to also emphasize, thank you for bringing that up, the need for confidentiality. Now, once the finalists are named, they are named in public, and what we usually recommend is that the spokesperson for the screening committee announce those names alphabetically in public. Once those names are announced, they're out there. And at that point, confidentiality doesn't exist. Their, their names are out in public, and you can Google them, you can talk to, you know, their employers, you can do anything you want. But during the preliminary process, it is very important to maintain confidentiality. And we sometimes get to the point where a candidate has gone through the preliminary screening in private and then decides he or she does not want to go forward, because doesn't, he doesn't, or she doesn't feel that they're a good match. So, you know, a person may want the ability to pull out before that final point at which the names become known. So we deal with each candidate on that basis. Do you, do you want to go forward, and do you understand your name will become public when we do? And it's not, it's rare, but sometimes a candidate will say, you know, I just don't think I'm ready for this, I'd like to withdraw. So you need to provide an option for that as well. So thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Just one other clarity for me, because I think I heard you say that any applicant that comes through, that every school committee member can read those?
Yes.
But can't talk about it. So tell me what the purpose is.
Sometimes school, it doesn't happen often. In fact, most often, school committee members tell us they do not want to see the entire applicant.
Well, I don't think we did it the last time. That's why I'm asking.
No, you didn't. But it's important for you to know that at least.
Right, that's why I'm.
Yeah. It's important for you to know, we think, that at least if you need it, if you want it, it's there. Before you do it, I'd suggest that you check with your own counsel to be sure that he or she agrees that that's appropriate, because we're relying on our counsel.
All I see that doing, though, is usurping the, you know, the search committee, because, you know, they're there to make those decisions, and we, you know, work hard to vet those people, put them in that process, and, you know, believe that they're bringing the skills to the table to bring us three to five people of the best.
Well, good, good for you, because that's the way we view it, too. Every once in a while, you run into it.
And you run into a risk of, I think, people having conversations.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I don't think that that's appropriate.
I agree.
And so what you're saying, Art, is, is, for clarity, if Nick had a position or something on a candidate, he couldn't call me and discuss that.
No.
So, I don't know. What if we can discuss that as a.
Yeah. I don't see the purpose of it. I think that's why we have a screening committee.
I think it's a lot of.
To do that work. And you know what? Going through, if you're going to go through additional resumes, going through all those resumes, is an awful lot of work. Anybody who's participated on any one of our various iterations of search committees knows that it can be numbing, mind-numbing work to go through them all.
You know, and then you have all this information, and there's nowhere you can go with it. It would drive me crazy.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
Well, I.
The inability to talk about a candidate, like, let's just say, if one of us knows somebody who's applying, and it's always that, hey, I happen to know this person, make sure you give them a good look, is that, that's not kosher than it sounds.
No.
No, and you'd probably have to recuse yourself from the vote if that person became a finalist.
Well, if there, if there's a potential conflict of interest, you'd have to determine that.
Yeah.
But what we would suggest to you is this, if a candidate comes before you and you have some sort of a professional or business relationship with that person, we would suggest that you disclose that to the entire committee. And then the committee can decide whether or not that relationship represents a significant enough potential conflict that you should not be part of that conversation. We've done searches, for example, where a school committee member has a relative who is an employee in the district. That school committee member has been advised, not by us, but by their counsel, that they cannot take part in the discussions. Now, that can vary, and I can think of ways that that wouldn't apply, but nevertheless, you have to be careful, is the, is the bottom line. And the important thing is disclosure. To go through the process and have somebody find out after the fact that you had a relationship with this candidate is probably the, what you don't want to have.
Just want to be clear, I don't know any superintendents, so it's not like.
Well, you never know. When the names come up, you never know.
It's just, it's just interesting, like, so almost knowing people and having a lot of, like, internal knowledge could count against.
Well, when you're, when it's, when you get to the public, when you get to the public piece.
Yeah.
And you, if you detect that there's a relationship that you should disclose, what you do, I would suggest, is you put that in the hands of the school committee, that you don't take it on yourself, and let the school committee discuss whether or not they, as a body, think that represents a conflict that ought to be dealt with, is what I would suggest. And again, I'm not an attorney, you know, there are some of these things where you want to speak with your own counsel, but it seems to me that disclosure and then putting that in the, in the hands and the wisdom of the committee as a whole is the way to handle it. Okay? Are there attorneys on this board, by the way? Any attorneys?
No.
Oh, yeah. Well, that I knew.
Bruce?
Yeah. This is a more sort of a loosen-your-tie, subjective kind of question, but this is the third process that I've been through, and I have found that the applicants sort of cluster in terms of their skill level or their level. What has the pool been recently in the places you've hired? What kinds of people are applying? People have been superintendents a long time, a short time, no time? What are you seeing?
All of those.
All of those. But I can tell you, I think that there, I, recently, I've seen a lot of talent. And we're doing, we're doing searches right now, the applicant pools, I think, are quite strong. And part of that, I think, is due to the fact that there's, there's developing a pipeline of talent, which is coming through the state superintendent's associations, who are now paying attention to getting people ready to be, to be superintendent. So I think that's happening as well. But this year in particular, I've been pleased with, with the applicant pools. And again, I think, I think Newburyport will be very attractive.
Can I ask, how many, how many searches are you involved with right now? That are ongoing?
We have one in New Hampshire. Check that out. Three? Do we have three going now?
Right. But not us as consultants.
Right. No, just best.
The firm, the firm has searches going in New England, but.
Yeah. And we, we limit the number of, because I coordinate them all, so you may see me associated with a number of searches over a period of, over a period of time.
All our stuff's here.
But when it comes to search consultants, we limit them to two concurrent searches.
Okay. And I know you just went to that conference recently, but what's your guesstimate of, like, how many, like ballpark, how many searches do you think will be going on this year? Not necessarily by nest deck, but like, how many superintendents?
Well, it could be.
Because I've found 11 that are rolling out right now.
Yeah, you could be up, before you're done, it could be 30, 35 before you're done, yeah. But a lot of those, geographically, that makes a difference. I mean, the western part of the state is like a different catch area. But we do searches all over New England, too, so I mean, we're, right now, doing a search in New Hampshire, for example.
Right.
You know, there may be more of those as well. Did I answer your question, Bruce, by the way?
Thank you so much, Art.
I appreciate it.
Take care. Nice to see you.
Have fun.
Always. Good luck tomorrow, professional dinner as well. Thank you. You, too. Good night, everybody.
No, you think I'm too early.
Yes.
Someone, you mentioned, you know, you were talking about confidentiality. Some districts are choosing to have the, would it be, in a city, who would it be that would swear in the search committee?
Clerk.
The city clerk swears in the search committee, and that gives it another layer.
What does this, what does the swearing in say?
They charge, they'll charge the committee.
They'll charge them as a subcommittee of the school committee.
It's really the way to go.
And they also, the clerk, if it is the clerk, in the case of a city, in the city.
It would be.
Yeah. They also go with the open meeting law.
Yeah.
And the conflict of interest.
Yeah, reinforce the confidentiality.
Yeah, and that way, your privacy is more.
No, we didn't do that before either.
Yeah, some do and some don't.
No, 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 we didn't do it in the Susan search.
No.
No.
It's not a bad idea, though.
Yeah, there is language that you can use to officially charge a committee.
Okay.
And I like the idea of the city clerk being involved, and that's what we did with the charter commission, too.
Sometimes, that's a good point, Stephen, and sometimes what the clerk does is actually come to the first meeting of the screening committee and does it right there.
And gives them something to sign that they.
Yeah. So it can all be done in one meeting.
We'll keep it confidential. It's just that added little. So are you, I think you're doing more than suggesting, but, and we will get the names of the search committee out as soon as possible. I think it's going to make, we'll have to have one more meeting, and I also think that your guidelines are helpful, although I think we pretty much stuck to those in some ways. Are you saying that it's not a good idea to just get people together to introduce themselves and do anything before, I'm looking at, before January 10th?
You can, if you wish to do that, you can. I mean, that constitutes a meeting, I would assume. It probably would be a posted meeting, I'm assuming, if you're bringing together a subcommittee.
Oh, I understand that. I, I.
But we don't.
We would post all of these.
Yeah. We don't, we really don't need to meet with them until January, which gives you time.
No, you don't, but should we be laying some groundwork or just saying, nice to see you?
If you wish.
Why did you?
Sure.
You know, what did you bring to us?
Sure, if you wish.
I mean, or is that part of, is that part of what you do in January?
Well, we, I, we certainly can't do it to the extent you can, because we're only representing you. But if you, if you wish to bring them together in an evening, for example, to talk with them a little bit and tell them about the, your perspective on the search, that's certainly acceptable to us.
Okay.
Our work would begin, as I said, if we stick to this calendar in January.
Right. I understand that, but.
We also recommend, because of the time commitment, to have a couple of alternate members, because somebody's going to call up three days before and say, you know, I just can't do it.
So it's like a juror, they sit in on everything, but then when it comes to the final vote, they would vote?
No, no.
You could do it that way, but not you.
It could be that way, but generally, you know, I, I sign up to be on the search committee, and I'm all set to go, and then I call you and say, I'm going to have to have a knee surgery, I'm not going to be able to be on the search committee, and you say, okay.
Oh, I, okay. I was talking about, you know, if someone had to drop out. Say you had to have that emergency surgery when we were doing the interviews.
Generally, you just go down one person.
Okay. So what would be the purpose of the alternate?
If before they start.
Like, we, it's just in a couple of weeks, and then it's not till January.
And maybe some people will drop out.
Yeah.
Someone now thinks. Time commitment as well.
Yeah. Now they think it's a good idea, and in January, they reconsider.
Okay. Okay.
And what Carolyn said, I think, is really, earlier, is really important. Perspective screening committee members really have to understand the time commitment. I mean, it's, it's about a three-week, solid three-week period of time when we need to have you around to meet, so.
No, you don't need every night for three weeks. No, you don't need every night for three weeks. It's just, we need to be able to choose dates in those three-week period.
Oh, sure, yeah. So unless there are other que, I want to thank you, first of all, it's for your attention and for your patience. And thank the young lady out here who gave us an hour.
I know. She just learned a lot, though. Would you like to join the search committee?
That'd be great.
So I apologize to you for having to wait there. Um, and Bruce and Cheryl will be in touch with you as time goes on to, to work things through.
Anybody have any last thought, questions? If you do, filter them through us, and we'll get them to, to you. But it's a pleasure to see you again.
Nice to see you, too. I should also mention that I have a place in Dover, New Hampshire, and I wear them almost every weekend. And I go right by here, so if there's something I need to stop by for...
I thought you were inviting us over.
So am I.
If, if I need to stop by to talk to anyone or, or do anything, just let me know. It's easy to do. Okay?
You're also good at talking on the phone while you're driving, although you shouldn't be doing that.
Well, I can do that, yes. I do that, too, yeah.
I know you do.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And good luck to you all. We look forward to, to working with you.
As we do with you.
It's always exciting. Searches are exciting.
I know. As long as the end result is exciting.
Yeah, it will be.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move quickly on, because we have a lovely young lady, and I've lost her name.
Tina Los.
Tina Los.
Want to come up?
Oh, sure.
Can you just do a tiny background about the grant and how you got here?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Um, so thank you for inviting me here tonight. Um, so as you may have heard, um, the city of Newburyport was awarded a three-year privately-funded grant from the Tower Foundation to work on regionalizing the positive youth development that you guys have worked here in Newburyport with Beacon Coalition for the past 13 years. So the grant covers the communities of Amesbury, Georgetown, Newbury, Rowley, Salisbury, and Newburyport. And since Newburyport has, um, done this model and the, used the 40 developmental assets, are you guys all familiar with that? Um, so we're using that model and bringing it, um, to a regional perspective. So there was some discussion, um, a few years ago, when, um, groups of resources, resource stakeholders were coming together to talk about the opioid epidemic. Um, and they realized that there was little prevention in terms of trying to get ahead of the issue, so working with youth before they're making risky decisions or engaging in risky behavior to try and push that off for as long as possible. And there weren't really many programs in the area that were trying to promote building assets for youth. So we were really lucky to receive this grant. Um, the grant was awarded, um, as of July 1st, and then I was brought on board as of August 1st. So I've been here for three months now, which it seems like a lot longer than that. But we've kind of hit the ground running. Um, and basically, I'll just give you an overview of what I've done so far, and then if you have any questions, um, we can go into some more detail. But, um, basically, the idea over the next three years is to get a sense of what is already... So let me back up for a second. So the, the model we're using is really community-based. We're saying that schools are part, one part of the institutions and the individuals who interact and have a relationship with youth, but they're not the only ones. So this grant really says that we need to take a full community approach and look at all the different members of the community, business, um, local government, parents, uh, youth-serving organizations, healthcare, media, um, everybody who has interactions with youth on a daily basis, and how they influence the way a youth will grow and thrive. Um, so what we've done to kick off the grant is start meeting with the stakeholders in all the different towns and communities. So that includes police chiefs, superintendents, um, school committees. I've been presenting to, um, local agencies who serve the greater regions, so like Pettingill or Boys and Girls Club or the YWCA, um, Link House, all these organizations that kind of are, um, our regions overlap with the communities that we're serving. So trying to talk with them, introduce myself, introduce the grant, and just get on people's radars in terms of that we do have this money, that, um, we're providing resources, and then also creating network links within the region. So getting to know what programs some of these organizations are working on and how we might connect that under this broader positive youth development umbrella, and maybe say like, "Oh, I heard, you know, somebody in Amesbury is working on building up some of their youth services. Well, what experience do we have here in Newburyport doing that?" And, "Oh, Rowley doesn't have anything yet." So can we kind of create this connection between the people who are working on that and say, "What's strong? How can we share those things that are working and who might benefit from hearing some of those other perspectives?" Um, so really trying to create these community networks to help support the good work that's already happening, and then share ideas about how we can support and grow areas that might need some, um, more support. So I've been meeting with those different stakeholders. Um, the other piece that we're looking at is doing a large community assessment. And one of the big pieces of that is hearing youth's voice. So, um, in the month of November, it started yesterday with Newburyport at the high school. All four school districts that are part of those six communities are participating in the attitudes and behaviors survey, um, that Newburyport has done here, um, every other year for the past 10 years. But it looks at measuring what assets youth have, and then also what risk behaviors they might be participating in, because the more assets youth have, the less likely they are to participate in those risk behaviors. So we're getting really comprehensive baseline data. We're looking at grade six through 12 in all the school districts. So we'll get a really comprehensive picture about what youth are participating in, what are their strengths, and what are some areas we might be able to work on in this grant to grow. We're also looking to talk to adults and communities and see what resources already exist that support youth and families. What are adult perceptions of values in the community? What are their needs? What are some barriers? How are they feeling that they do or don't already support the youth in the community? How is our youth's, um, voice valued in the community? And we're also looking at data that already exists. So from Anna Jakes Hospital, that does regional data. Um, we're looking to talk to police, um, about overdose data that they might have or Narcan usage, really casting a really broad net and looking at different kinds of data, doing focus groups, doing, um, key stakeholder interviews, really getting a good idea of what already exists in the community. So that's pretty much the first year or two of the grant. And then your, yeah, sure.
Yeah, can I just ask you, before you get too much further? Uh, in, in your experience, what are some of the examples of some, general examples of barriers that you've encountered that you've had to, you know...
Um, so transportation is one that comes up a lot. And so some of the communities say, "This happens at youth services all the time. Like, we'll be running programs after school, but if a youth can't get on the bus, or a parent can't get them there, or they, maybe they can get there on the bus, but they can't get home, then that limits the access that a youth can get to the program, even if it does exist to serve them. It doesn't help if they can't reach the program."
That's a good example. Thank you.
You're welcome. So once we get that big-picture community look and look at all the data, we'll be asking stakeholders in their own communities to be looking at that data, hearing from the youth. The youth will present their data back, just like they do here in Newburyport. Um, and the stakeholders will get to say, "These are some things that we identify as a community that are important to us, and here's where we want to work." So we're going to try and look regionally and see if there's some things that across the board, everybody wants to work on, or something that's low for everybody. So one thing that's kind of risen to the top already is, um, mental health access for youth who might be on, um, state health insurance. They're really limited providers, and there's a lot of barriers, um, to get that treatment. So that might be something that we tackle regionally, or it might be an awareness campaign, like the I-Support, yeah, we're looking to revamp that and, and push it out regionally. Uh, but there also might be things that come up here in Newburyport or Amesbury or Salisbury that are unique to those communities. And my job as the coordinator would be to help work with those stakeholders, to help guide them in a direction that they could, um, work on that individual project that might be important to them, um, while helping them to learn how to, how it can become sustainable on their own, so that I'm not doing projects in six communities, because that would be a lot of work. Um, we had a person like myself just for Newburyport for 10 years. Um, so I'm trying to build champions in these other communities and see who's already kind of doing this work and how we can help support them with resources while we have the grant, and really just bringing this positive youth development model to them so that they can start thinking about how to bridge that gap between youth and community and start building those strengths. That's kind of my, in a nutshell.
How do you tie in with, um, Andy Egmont and youth services here?
So, um, we're trying to figure that out as we go. Um, right now, I am co-running the middle school youth council with Andy. Um, and I'm helping out with the Beacon Coalition. So, um, I've been helping, we have an event coming up next Monday. Um, it's called Addiction in Our Workplaces Business Forum, and we've invited restaurant bars and, um, local businesses, owners and managers, to come here about how they can support their employees who might be struggling with addiction personally or in their families. Um, we're gonna be talking about what policies, um, they can consider implementing to help make their, um, workplaces a safer environment. So that's kind of a project that's Beacon Coalition-focused, um, but that I've been helping run. Um, so we're kind of figuring out what makes sense. Um, I can't be the sole person that runs the Beacon Coalition, um, but I'm trying to support Andy in that role.
Good. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah.
About Mr. Quill?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so when you were talking about assessments earlier, uh, is that separate from this, for instance, Profiles of Student Life?
Uh, that Profiles of Student Life survey is part of the larger assessment.
So it's part of the larger assessment? So do you have some, like, if you will, uh, environmental type of assessments, like evaluating your communities and things like that? Because I see you're working with about six, as you say, six, six communities, four school districts. They're gonna be a little bit different. So, so they're specific, if you will, uh, directions of the assessment, like this one is obviously kind of student-centered or, you know, child or adolescent-centered. What, what are some of the other assessment areas? Like I mentioned, is there one for like, community or neighborhoods or...
Mm-hmm. Yep, so two of the other ones that we're working on, designing right now, one is a community assessment. So, um, that's talking to adults in the community, so that doesn't have to be just parents. It could be, um, the senior community, people living in the community, anybody 21-plus, basically, um, looking at what their values are, how they feel like they're connected to the community, if they know that youth exist in their community, you know, what that relationship looks like. Um, another part of that assessment will also be a resource assessment, so that will be something more that, um, stakeholders would do. So people who own local businesses, fire, police, local government, um, seeing what kind of connections they already have. Um, that's kind of in the form of stakeholder interviews, really, um, going through checklists and being like, you know, "Do you have a bus transportation system? Is it easy to access? Do you have access to fresh groceries?" So all these things, this grant isn't just substance use-focused. We're really talking about anything that could be a risk factor. So that's homelessness, food insecurity, um, and we can, we, since it's a privately-funded grant, we really have, um, a lot of creative, um, room to work in order to help really identify where youth are struggling, and we can figure out how to implement an intervention that's gonna be specific to that need.
Any, any assessment considering, uh, support networks for youth or seeing what their skills are like in networking support for themselves?
So how youth connect within the community?
Well, how, how, how youth can connect up with, you know, support services if they need to on their own, and, and to what level, uh, they're able to function and do that, because that's oftentimes a, a key strength.
That's a really good point, yeah. So how youth can access system resources.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, yeah, that was something that we're considering for the adult survey, um, but that's a really good point, that we should have that perspective from youth as well. So, um, I'll definitely keep that in mind while we're looking at focus groups. Thank you.
I wish you a lot of luck. It sounds like a great, uh, great role to be having in the area.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about the project.
What, what, I just wanted, what led you to focus on, um, grade six through 12 and not include, like, fourth and fifth graders who are at the brink of a lot?
Yep. So this is just our starting point.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah, so, um, I love that your head's already there, because really, um, that is where this work needs to go, is younger. And with the positive youth development model, we're really talking about teaching resilient skills, teaching positive coping mechanisms, teaching social engagement skills, and you can do that as a younger, at a younger age. Typically, with your typical prevention program, people are talking specifically about drugs and alcohol, tobacco, other prescription pills. So that content really doesn't sit well with parents in the broader community when you're talking about talking to fourth or fifth graders. Um, but with this positive model, we can talk about building that resilience earlier. Um, so the idea is to start from middle to high school, which is in the broader prevention community, kind of where middle school is actually newer. It was just high school. And so in the past, you know, five to 10 years...
That's what I'm thinking. I'm hoping it's gonna move down.
It's become more socially acceptable to say, "We need to be discussing this in middle school." There's definitely push from the prevention community to go lower. Um, so I hope that we get there, um, but for right now, we're trying to kind of meet people where they're at, and for communities that might not have had a coalition or experienced with prevention, it's hard to jump in and say, "We need to talk to elementary school kids," and they go, "Mm, no thanks," and close the doors. Um, so really trying to...
I'm sure, I'm pretty sure our fourth and fifth grade will most classes go there.
That's great.
I have a fifth grader, and he comes home, they're there. I don't think they're doing sex ed or anything like that yet, but, but certainly drugs, alcohol, that kind of thing.
That's fantastic.
And they're, you see, they're in the same building as our six through eight. So we've got one building housing four through eight. And, um, you know, there's not a lot of interaction during the school day. They are two separate, kind of, but, you know, they're, they're, they're there. They're in that same environment.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and I meant with Jerry, he does great.
Yeah. That's good.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I can't speak to what you guys have done 10 years ago before the Beacon Coalition started, but I'd be willing to guess that it, there were some few years of discussion and taking a look at how that looks before it was now mainstream, which is awesome.
Oh, definitely, it grew, you know? You, yeah. And, and we've been very lucky to have the continuation of the Beacon Coalition as long as we have had that kind of service. So this is a great, wider picture of that, I think.
One of the things that attracted me, Tina, about what you had to say, and I think is, has been the success of the Beacon Coalition, is that the spokespeople for the program happen the, the kids themselves. And that's part of what you're, you're reaching out to continue to do. So the kids do the analysis of the survey, and they come back and present the results. Um, because I think that's what has allowed us to keep Beacon going. It's a, it's the kids that are involved with it and are driving it, and...
And what we picked up by some of those surveys that we weren't aware of, um, you know, depression, thoughts of suicide, and, uh, it's just, uh, it's nice that someone's gonna pay attention to that.
Yeah.
How do you communicate back to the schools about what you find?
Um, so with the youth survey specifically, or...
Any of your things.
Um, so the youth survey, the plan is to have the youth, again, as they have in the past, present to the school committee and the broader Newburyport community. Um, we're looking to also put together something that's regional, so having youth from all of the different communities be able to talk about what we're seeing more broadly. Um, I'd love to, in year two of this grant, do some call-to-action forums, um, really starting to have the youth, um, speak out about what they're hearing, but also have them start talking to other stakeholders and getting feedback. Um, and having, um, there's a lot of different models that you can use. One's World Cafe, so you kind of have different tables with adults and youth sitting together, talking about a specific topic, and then they kind of rotate through. So it's really, um, you're doing multiple things at once. So you're teaching youth and adults how to have that, that honest and respectful conversation.
We did that one year with the 40 asset results, and it was, um, it was quite intriguing to see the kids and the parents, and, and then an outside person like me sitting at a table, listening to that. It was incredible.
Yeah, yeah. And so it really is a core of the model, is hearing from youth and valuing youth's voice as a community. Um, and so that's really at the core of everything that we're doing as we're planning all these. We're saying, like, I'm having an event, um, for legislator, or, yeah, some of the state legislators and local government leaders, um, about the positive youth development model. We're saying, "Okay, how are we engaging youth in that aspect? How are we engaging youth in the survey process and the community assessment process?" So each step of the way, we're engaging youth, and they're learning as long as, as we're learning from them as well.
Anything we can do to help? Let us know.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, you're up.
Okay, um, so I don't know whether this is good news or bad news.
Oh, boy. It's too late at night to hear that.
No, the reason I'm saying good news or bad news is from the time that I circulated this two weeks ago.
You didn't hear anything.
I didn't hear anything. Uh, so that means either the policies are pretty much where we want them to be. Uh, I do recognize that there's still some spelling and grammar things that probably need to be corrected. Uh, so I guess I would open it up and say, are there, was there anything specific that people had comments on that they would like the policy committee to address?
No, I think it was our responsibility to forward those, and if something comes up now, it's gonna be.
In which case? In which case?
The mayor's the one that usually comes up with the little nuances.
She had a couple of little things.
Okay, so she did give you feedback.
She said, I don't have them right now, and I said, I can understand where you might not, but she said, you know, I'll get back to you on Wednesday. What I will do is take the mayor's comments and any other comments that still come in, and put them into friendly amendments to the, to the approved document, and circulate it to everybody redlined, so you can see what those changes are. If anybody has some issues that would like us to reopen and reconsider those, we will do it. Otherwise, we'll just take them as, as agreed upon. Does that sound like the most effective and efficient way of going through it?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And I have a great deal of competence in your committee.
You've got a good committee.
I know that.
Okay, so, getting back to it then, uh, let's start with the drug policies document. And that was drug-free workplace policy that we hadn't approved yet. Teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs is also new because that's part of the curriculum section. Uh, so those two policies are required by the DESE, so, um, I would like to move the second reading and approval of these policies. So moved.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, we need a second, I'm sorry. I thought you were firsting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Discussion.
Yeah, um, so the, as I understand it from reading it, one of the things that we need to provide our employees is an orientation or education for drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. And I was gonna ask, what do we do now? Do we do anything like that now?
Specifically for prevention?
Just teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco.
There, yeah, the, um, there is, as far as I know, nothing right now, other than what is written into the policy. What the superintendent had envisioned as part of this policy is that we would have a verbal screening, the way we do with students, where these issues can be brought up, and teachers can then be, be referred to, uh, the support agencies that we have in place to, to deal with things like that.
I see the question.
Yeah, and under the drug-free workplace, number two, it says, establish a drug-free awareness program to inform employees about the dangers of drug abuse in the workplace. I just wondered if we were doing anything.
We're not doing that yet.
Okay.
Not, not doing that. That is part of what we would do. That, the, the verbal screenings, both at the student level and at the employee level, are the two important changes that we have made. And by the way, that verbal screening is required by DESE proceedings.
And who conducts that?
That would be conducted by, uh...
Nurse.
The nurse, and, no, not, not nurse, not nurse, what, for teachers or for students?
Um, students, I guess.
For students, for students, it would be either the nurse or the count, the counselors that we have in place already. So it's part of the process that we go through anyhow. It's now just giving them the tools for them to ask the right kinds of questions and draw out some of the kind of, uh, information we would need.
And what about the staff?
The staff, um, I, I wish Susan were here to answer that question, because she did envision that it would be primarily working with, um, working with the, sorry, she.
No, no, I mean, the policy we're really focused on is one for students, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the one that the state is basically looking for all school districts to have, if you will. It's almost like a cookie cutter approach, but it's a first step that needs to happen, given the various drug act.
But I thought you said we were doing two policies on that, one for teachers and for students.
We, we have one for, for the drug-free workplace policy as well. Which basically is focused on, on education first, and then we will have the, Susan had envisioned a couple of ideas in terms of, and it's probably the kinds of stuff that's already available from your insurance, where you say, hey, yeah, you've got mental health services, legal services, these kinds of services available to you, and we would probably partner up in that.
And, and the one we approved regarding that already has your recommendations in it, correct?
It has a recommendation to establish the drug-free awareness program to inform employees.
Okay. Is there a specific program you're talking about, or is this a generic term?
Generic.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't write anything specific into policy.
No, no, I didn't know if there was, that was a program.
No.
Thank you.
The next question.
Okay.
Was this motion for the number eight, the substance use prevention policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so second reading and.
Second reading.
Now we're discussing it.
Yeah, and I may be hopping around here a little bit, Mrs. Kennedy.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure we got the ones that are officially supposed to have in place approved first. Any further discussion?
Ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes.
Carries unanimously, and that's the one that DESE wants, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next, uh, D E F. The next one that I would like to take a look at is Section F, and this is facilities. Really, this basically talks about how we close schools when we close them, how we name schools, the naming policies that are involved in, uh, in naming opportunities, um, and community use of, of school facilities. Uh, so those are, the community use of school facilities is probably the longest one there, um, and that is already been approved, because we approve it each time we run into a budget, because it talks about how we get money for the use of our facility. So you will see that that, that was basically just looking at the, uh, last update on that, but that's part of the, the others are just sort of policies that go around that as well, so, again, I would, uh, move the approval for the facilities policy, Section F.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mr. Hockeiser?
Um, just 'cause it's come up so often, and I, I thought we were gonna change the, the timing. This is, uh, will not be used by any school or community group prior to 1:00 PM on Sundays.
Yes, uh, the version that Kathy circulated here was not the version that I sent to you earlier, and that, um, where is that? That was something that I had removed and said that this would be part of the, the policy change, was the removal of that, so if it's in here, uh...
I think we talked about that the last time, that it was supposed to be removed, correct? Because we've been dealing with it item by item, or sport by sport.
Sport by sport. And there's, there's two, one about Sundays, and then one about Saturdays and holidays. Numbers nine and 10. On page, on the page eight, top page nine.
Yeah, I'm just looking for it here.
That may not be the right iteration, but the most current one.
Okay.
As much as I love things electronic, they kind of get lost sometimes with our stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you take a look at, uh, Section nine, let me bring my, my own version of that. Our paragraph nine of Section L, page eight.
L U L?
Yeah. Nine and 10.
Yeah.
Um, I believe those both go away. We use it at the discretion of the, of the.
K D?
A D. In other words, we don't talk about time limits on these things.
Is there, is there gonna be anything to guide his or her discretion, or is it?
The way everything else is his discretion on, on, you know, obviously, I think what, what plays most importantly into the discretion is making sure that youth of all ages get use of the facilities in a balanced way. Uh, since varsity sports take up so much of the afternoon time, focus will be on youth sports for Saturdays and Sundays. Obviously, you know, once in a while you'll have a league soccer game or something at the stadium that will have priorities, but I know that that's, that's his priority, and that's been his approach.
I just wonder, like, it seems, sorry, we're, we're lucky that Kyle has good discretion, so I guess we either need to, I would think, add some guidance, or just make sure we hire well.
We have some priorities.
Or communicate well.
Communicate well into the future, or, you know, with the new superintendent coming in, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, like, so I'm saying, it seems, I wouldn't want.
Okay, so, so if you take a look at the, at the policy itself, on page, Policy FG, on page six. We do want people to use the facilities. The school facilities will not be granted to any person or persons for individual gain. Uh, school committee prohibits the use of alcohol. School facility will be permitted. Uh, if such use interferes with a function or activity, in other words, we'll give priority to the schools, uh, acting requests, uh, for use of facilities, the school system will not discriminate on the basis of race, sex, religion, national origin, or political viewpoint, and then, um, you know, we talk about the groups that people fall into. So if you feel that's important, and the committee wants to take something into it, I think that's somewhere in there is where we could add a, a statement that, you know, uh...
How do I say it? I, I guess I'd hope it isn't necessary to outline, but if, like, could we, without knowing, end up with somebody who's?
No, I, I, I hear you, but, you know, that's why.
Yeah.
If you have, do you have suggested verbiage for that, Mr. Hockeiser?
I don't.
And, and see.
Unless, you know, we wanna say that, you know, the fields are open for, are open for application for usage from, you know, 9:30 or 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays, or some, you know, I'm saying, like, just something that clarifies.
Well, there is, there is a rules for use of Newburyport Public School Facilities.
Yeah.
And that's on the next page there.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we have public school fields, which is where we have nine and 10 that we're taking off.
And, um, whose responsibility is it to make sure that the A D knows these policies?
The superintendent has been, A, Kyle has basically written these policies with us.
No, but I'm speaking of after Kyle.
After Kyle.
That's what I think Mr. Hockeiser.
Yeah, the superintendent of schools.
Okay.
The superintendent of schools always is responsible for making sure that all of her reports.
After Kyle or after Susan, that's all I'm saying, like, in the positive.
They're, they're, the people below them follow the policies at the schools.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes.
Um, since there is more than one iteration of this Section F on the table, and we got the one that talks, that, that didn't leave the Sundays out.
Mm-hmm.
Could you do a clean copy, and we could vote on this the next time?
Absolutely.
I, I think I'd like to hold it till it's clean.
I just would like to sort of make a comment, a general comment about it.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Um, I, I understand, you guys have done a really terrific job, and I understand the, the importance and the value in making sure that the facilities are not abused by the community. Um, I, I kind of wish that there was some way, some policy or some encouragement for the community to come in to try to use the facilities more than they are used now. Um, you know, and, and sort of where the rubber hits the road for me is that I've, I've been aware of several occasions when people wanted to come in and use school facilities in a way that would generate money for the schools, and we're told, for example, we've got a rehearsal that night, and we can't move the rehearsal, so you can't use the auditorium. Um, I, I'd like to be able to encourage our principals to be a little bit more entrepreneurial in, in what they're looking at, but also that the community, community owns these schools, and I, and I wish that we, there was a way we could sort of encourage and welcome more community use of the schools.
I, I, I think that's, I'm not sure that that's a policy answer, Bruce. I think that is more a direction from the superintendent to the.
Communication.
To, to the principals type of thing, um, because I think right now, you're right. People who have responsibility for a specific, uh, part of the facility, whether it be the auditoriums, or whether it be a field, or whether it be the gymnasiums, uh, will cloak themselves in the policy that says we will give priority to school-related activities. And that, I think, is the right direction to give from a policy point of view, but I think the, garnering the kind of flexibility that you're talking about, really is something that needs to come from direction from superintendent to principal down to the people who manage it, so.
Good way. I look forward to finding a superintendent who will hear that and do it.
It should be an automatic no.
It should, it what, it should be automatic?
It shouldn't be an automatic no.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, the only thing, the only thing that has seemed to change, and I think we had a heart in voting it, was there are more fees now. There are more fees. If you wanna go in and use, uh, like, the cafe for something, and it requires custodial, custodians be around, there's a fee.
Yeah.
So, you know, a lot of these things aren't free any. No, and I'm not talking about free use. Right. I'm talking about. Just as available, okay. Make it available. Right. And encourage principals to, because, you know, what happened. Maybe just some of the language in here, like, we could say, we invite you to, you know, you know what I mean? And just change the language around a little bit.
That's why I'm saying, let's.
Well, we do say, we, the, the policy of the school system to encourage the use of school buildings by, and grounds by responsible Newburyport organizations or individuals. So we do, our policy does say we should encourage that. I think, from what the comments that Bruce is making, we perhaps have not been as.
Our practice isn't.
The practice of the encouragement hasn't been.
Even in that, even in that line one, right, like, after, says, Newburyport organizations said, and, and, we could write, and, and, after, and, say, invite individuals for such education, cultural, recreational, social, philanthropic, you know, so I think if we just inserted a few welcoming words like that, you know.
Yeah, I like to invite.
All right, let's, that's the end of that discussion. We're gonna table it to our next meeting, and that's fine.
Thank you, Nick, and I'm sorry to sort of wait until this, but it's something I've been kicking around for a long time.
Do we want to?
Is that tableed indefinitely, or?
No, just for right now, so we can, we're going to the next policies.
Now, are you, are you, are you tabling just policy?
F.
F? G, not Section F.
It says, Section F, facilities development, on my page.
File FG, on, on the right side?
Nope.
Yes, after Section F?
Section F, go all the way to the right, it says, File FG.
On the top of it.
No, 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 I'm, I'm looking at this.
Oh, oh.
I'm not on that.
She's looking at, she's.
I'm, I'm just looking at the way it's stated in the, um, in the.
So what item number are you looking at? You're looking at item seven?
Number seven, policy, Section F, facilities development.
Here is the question. Section F has various policies in it.
Mm-hmm.
Of which only one is in question right now. That's what I am asking.
All right, which section is, what's the specific?
F, FG.
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 Yes, community use of schools.
Okay.
Okay, should I? Will be the one that we're tabling. Uh, others?
Bless you.
Any comments or, or changes to the others?
What one are we tabling?
Section FG, um, facilities development.
Yeah.
FG.
And the language will get cleaned up, and we'll review it.
FG, there, it's, these are all facilities development, so.
It's Section F, File FG.
File FG.
Section F, File FG.
Yes.
Lot of Fs.
Community use of school facilities is the one that will be corrected. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, may I move approval of the rest of Section F, which is actually the part we haven't seen before, which would be FA, uh, facilities development goals, FCB, retirement of facilities, FBC, naming of new facilities, FFA, memorials, and that would be it.
I would second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, David Bruce.
All those things just carried. Not gonna say what they are again.
Okay, so now we would move on to.
H?
Uh, Section H, which is negotiations, and there are only three policies to that. Negotiations goals, negotiations legal status, and school committee negotiating agents. They all have their legal references. Um, any changes or modifications to those? Hearing none, I move the approval of Section H negotiations in its entirety.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, I.
Mr. Manin.
It's, sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Um, it's just a stylistic thing, but, um, under the school committee negotiating agents, the sentence that follows the first paragraph, the school committee will appoint the negotiator and the fee or salary for his services. Can we do like a his, her, their?
Or their.
Their services. I just wanna sort of make it gender neutral.
Be gentle.
Okay.
It does read that way elsewhere, down below.
Yes, sir.
He, she.
He, she.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Oh, so we should be consistent, either he, she, or they, or their.
Okay.
Well, proper now, 'cause that's interesting. That's what I thought.
You, you, you go to the plural.
Yeah.
They, they.
I've always liked their.
Right.
They, they.
Okay.
People hate it though.
I will make that change.
I'm just saying.
I know, but.
As a, an amendment to, to be shown later, not necessarily procured and proven.
Should I say, yes, amended?
I'm sorry?
Should, should I say, yes, amended?
Yes, you can say, as amended.
Were you ready?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Uh, now we go on to Section K, and this is community relations. This has a whole bunch of policies. Um, this sort of becomes a pot in which a, a whole bunch of disparate things have fallen into because they are related to the community but aren't necessarily in agreement, or, I, I'm not sure that they are exactly where I would want them to belong, but they're there. Uh, for example, we have non-custodial parents' rights in there, and I'm not sure that's exactly where it belongs, but I'm not sure where it belongs other than here, right now. So that, that might be something that changes location as we move, as we move forward. Uh, but, uh, this is primarily, um, focused on our relations with the public at large. Uh, we have everything for community involvement and decision-making. Uh, we have, uh... news media relations and news releases. We have public complaints, public gifts to the schools, advertising in the schools, relations with the police, which basically refers back to the memorandum of understanding that we've got with the Attorney General. And, I'm sorry, with the district attorney, not with the Attorney General. And relations with local government authorities, which goes into our relations with the city council.
Would, would that cover the wall that they fuller field of all those banners that get put up there?
The fence?
The fence.
The fence? That would probably fall in facilities.
But, but that seems to have been in the past of either a question or, you know, what is the process to do that? Well, you go to the Secretary at the NAC, it costs $25. It needs to be appropriate. You need to take it down in the appropriate time. But who's really the clearinghouse for that? That can't be, that can't be the responsibility of the Secretary at the NAC. And we've had a couple of issues with those, that's all.
We have in the past, and honestly, Cheryl, that, that is not included in here. And I'm not sure whether it belongs in the, in Section F or in this section. Why don't I, I write that down as something to.
Well, it also came to my attention through another school committee member that last weekend, there was a sign posted outside the Knott-Mullen from the NEF, and it talked about a cash bar. Then, somebody said something and they put black tape over the words Cash Bar.
It's since been taken down.
The whole banner?
Yeah.
So.
Still having the cash bar.
But, you know, we, we've had issue with that for so long.
Liquid assets.
Liquid assets. So, I just, you know, those are two, two areas that have come up, so could you just?
I will, I will, we will take it to the.
Thank you.
To the committee and come up with policy on, on that, on the fence.
We're not taking the cash bar. We just don't need to advertise it at the middle school.
We, we need to.
The parents go there.
Um, we need to move this before, I have some recommendations for just a little bit of language. We need to wait till it's moved before I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I recommend, I move the approval of Section K.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, under Section K, the very first line, under, "In order to maintain productive relationships with the community, the district is committed to sustaining." The next line, I, I would like sort of a higher standard of accountability, and I, I would really love to see the word timely included in that.
Okay.
Effective, accurate, timely, and meaningful communications.
Well, that covers all of it.
What section is that again?
That's Section K, K.A.
Okay, K.A., all right, thanks.
Okay.
Anything else, Bruce?
Do we accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Corr?
Well, there's really no such thing as a friendly amendment, so we accept that as amendment.
As your amendment, well, he's friendly, yeah.
Yeah.
He's friendly.
And then.
I'm totally not, it's not wise to do friendly amendments. You save that for the good of the order. But we don't do a good of the order.
Okay.
And then for KBA and KBE, it, it, I would love to see school councils mentioned in both of those sections as ways that we encourage parents to interact. I think we want to be promoting school councils every opportunity we've got, and I'd like to see it in policy.
They're law, too.
But I think, you know, I think this is really, really good work.
I like that.
Can I be really picky? When that first sentence in KBA, the clause, the way it's written, is talking about parents, I, I think you want to write, "To foster relationships, comma, which encourage cooperation." And put that whole clause there and then end it with, comma, "with parents," or change the, comma, "which" to that.
The general goal of the district, to foster relationships with parents.
So, strike with parents.
Strike which and, and.
I would either say, "Relationships, comma, which encourage," and put the whole clause there, and then at the end say, "comma, with parents." Or say, "Relationship with parents, that encourage."
So, end the sentence with parents rather than for students, or have?
Yes.
Okay, so have, so.
Hold on a second, I'm just going to.
So that the clause modifies the relationships, not the parents?
Yeah. So, keep four students in, but do a comma.
Yeah.
With parents.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on a second, that was in Section K. Let's go back here to where I can change it. The general goal of the school, of the district, to foster relationships which encourage cooperation between the home and school. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Moving over?
Yeah, and I just add it with parents.
Establishing and achieving common educational goals for students.
Are there many more changes to these, these sections? Because we really should have forwarded these to Nick during the last two weeks instead of trying to.
Smith them now.
Smith them now, so, and I'm sorry about that, Nick, because it's hard to go back, but.
No, it's okay.
It's small.
It's small. Any further changes or additions or comments? I move the approval of the amended Section K in its entirety.
Can I hear a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Okay, and that would leave now. Which one hasn't been done yet? Section L.
We, we already had a motion on the board.
But we received some amendments, so now that's why, as amended.
So, was it two motions or was it?
No, it's an amended emotion. A motion.
A motion with amendments.
Amended motion.
I guess we should have done it. Approve the, motion to approve the amendments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now a motion to approve Section K as amended.
Okay. Thank you.
Just two motions there and one passed.
Yeah, all right. Education Agency Relations Goals, this is fairly straightforward. It talks about relations with other school districts, with relations with non-public schools. This is where we are looking into student teaching and internships, and we added a policy in there to support our goal around partnering with institutions of higher learning. So, there, those are all fairly simple. This section has five policies in it. I move approval of Section L, Education Agency Relations.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Decanter, it's through.
And I would really like to thank the policy committee. I know this is long-term. No, it's, it's.
You're almost there.
It's long-term, and this is hard work. I, I really appreciate all the time that's gone into this.
It's taken.
Because I think the changes and the look at it is going to make a, a big difference in the future.
Mm-hmm, I think it's going to make it easy for new superintendent coming in.
Right.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much.
Right, so, thank you for that. Is there any subcommittee that would like to report? Joint Ed met this evening. We had three topics for discussion. The, they asked for an update on the superintendent search, which we gave them and just told them what, what we were intending to do and what we're doing. We also had a question on Joint Ed about the bus contract. And what we talked about was when we begin to talk about the bus contract, that perhaps it comes to the finance committee first and then comes out to the whole. The reason we spent some time on that was because of, you know, different things, later start times, you know, flexes, whatever. And I can't remember the third one.
Well, I think we also talked about changing the, our procedure around the bus contract. We've mostly historically had it reported to us. I think what we really are, want to encourage is a conversation at the school committee level before we enter into, or before we really draft a contract, about what are the things we're looking for, what kinds of things might we want to see covered. And have that sort of conversation, which is a more philosophical conversation. But have that as, as a way to, you know, sort of inform the district. Then, when a contract that reflects some of those ideas, a proposed contract or RFP bid that reflects some of those ideas is prepared, that that then go to the finance committee and then on to us for approval.
And approval.
But, but that, that, you know, what we, what we need to add to the agenda soon is this conversation about transportation and where, where we are with it. Where we'd like to go with it.
The school?
Also, you know, the other part of that was if we do later start times after next year, that there would be an opener in the contract for the second year, or whatever. But we, we need to discuss the ramifications of all of that.
Well, I'll talk to Nancy and let her know that that we've got some questions, and maybe it would work best if she came to a meeting and we just asked her, I mean, even starting with what's required, what isn't required, what are we mandated to provide, what aren't we mandated to provide? And then see if we can start blending those into what, what our requirements are, and then add in the other things that we'd like to see. For instance, maybe more late buses, more late buses auctions and things like that, and.
That's exactly what we talked about.
The piece with the, the opener for possible later school start times.
Right. So, that's why we just felt it needed to be a discussion and.
No, I think, and then, it plays into what we're going to need to do in the springtime if we talk about fees. You know, we may need to edge the fees up a little bit.
Well, and we even talked about what is our responsibility for, you know, the IC and the charter and, you know, the two-mile limit and all of that. It's time to bring it all up.
Let her share those.
All right.
Did any other committee meet?
No. I'm sorry. Yeah, curriculum met, and for the period of time I was able to be there, we had a really good and useful conversation that was sort of our first take on the MCAS scores and why the MCAS scores seem so different than previous MCAS scores, and it was a very informative conversation. I had to leave a little early. I don't know if Dave wants to add or Angela wants to add anything.
We wrapped it up pretty much with your.
And do you have a date for that, Angela, to present the results to us as a school committee?
We haven't settled on a date yet. We, we thought maybe early December, though, is what we're looking at for that.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the, you know, because.
Of the other things that you have.
We need to discuss, so I'm trying to balance the time of what we need to accomplish. Was there anything else? I would just like to, it's in your notes. The date of the joint city council and school committee FYI 19 budget has been set for Tuesday, November 14th at 6:30 at the, right here in this building as we did last year. That's the joint meeting where we get the city's budget and the school considerations. I didn't know if you were due with the date. Other than that, you can see the list of all of the subcommittees. So, other than that, could I hear a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else?
Any a fraction on the 11?
Well, that's right, and the bidding's open today on lunch.
Bidding's up already, go online.
Like next week?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, you will not be able to bid on a Mexican dinner this time. It has been replaced with a paella dinner.
It was all in here.
What kind of dinner?
Paella.
Seafood?
Seafood.
You doing it? You doing it?
I'm doing it.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good option.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
How about a second?
Okay.
Anybody like to discuss it? We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
So, don't forget to move.
Leadership tonight.